Okay, it's six o'clock and we'll call this, uh, this meeting to order. Uh, July the twentieth, twenty twenty-three, meeting, Westmoreland City Council. Uh, at this time, Mr. Brady is going to do her devotion of birth.
So stand, please. Dear God, we thank you for all the ways you blessed us. We thank you for living in democracy. We thank you for being able to govern ourselves and to have the freedoms that we have in this country, dear Lord. Let's never, never forget those. Please be with our leaders tonight as they make decisions, get them listed in the discernment. Thank you for being our God, in Jesus' name, amen.
Please remain standing and keep your caps up in good place, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Kelly, call real place.
Brown.
Here.
Lane.
Here.
Calvert.
Here.
Jess.
Here.
Here.
Let your record show to everybody's presence. No, no. You missed, I had them.
Are they here?
Here.
All right, let your record show to everybody's presence. And the next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda, but I need to make a little bit of change there on that one. Where the new business, it says liquor ordinance update, ordinance has got ordinance number, that needs to read, uh, Mr. Patel asking for a, uh, ordinance change. We're not voting on the ordinance tonight. We just need one to make it, um, four liquor stores instead of three. So we're thinking we're voting on that.
I'd like to motion to amend the agenda per, uh, Mayor's request.
Second.
Motion been made, properly second by Councilman Calvert and Councilman Jones. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All vote, please sign. Motion carries. The agenda has been updated. Uh, motion to approve the council minutes from June fifteenth. If any packet, I hope everybody's had a chance to look them over.
Make a motion to approve minutes from June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
My second, I'm motion.
Motion's been made for Councilman Jones, uh, Councilman Staples. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All vote, please sign. Motion carries. The, uh, June twenty-three financial statement is not complete and it's not in the packet. And, uh, we'll need to be voting on that right now. Ms. Kelly, could you hand me the signing sheet? All right, we've got several who wants to speak at y'all's rights. You'll have three, three minutes to speak. And, uh, uh, we'll let, uh, what's, are they all, can you? T.J. Litten, is that right? Is that who that is?
Uh, Litten? T.J.?
He's, uh, he's coming. We're, T.J.
Can you respect the rules?
Yes. Before you get started, before time starts, Kelly. This is a different style meeting than what was like last time in work study. Y'all can talk to us, but we can't respond during the comments. So if you ask the question, we can't answer it. So time starts, go ahead, but.
Good evening, council members and citizens. My name is T.J. Litten. I'd like to start off by asking council members, if you please amend the rules for the evening in respect to the questions and comments. For the record, I'm not against growth. It's in the, in the, not only that, growth is welcome. No one in this town wants to see it with a way and die or become stale and stagnant, become so stale and stagnant that developers turn their nose up at just the mention of development here. No one wants the small-town feel of the Westmoreland people want to raise their kids in to be a feeling of the past. We've got a good thing here and people want that. It's not that hard to understand. And no one wants Westmoreland to be the butt of another joke that takes away from the respectability of this town. The Westmoreland way of life, a town full of history and beauty awaits you. We're so proud to have Pleasant Grove Farms in Westmoreland, Tennessee. The sense of community is evident in the schools and families all around town. All these came directly from the Pleasant Grove Farms Facebook page, all of which along with countless other similar posts in nature are selling this way of life, our way of life, the small-town, the small-town feel. Both five D and triple B are both cashing in and selling on this way of life. One just faster and bigger and on a bigger scale. Please show us the benefits and how this will benefit the citizens of this town or this county. It's not a rhetorical statement. I'm very willing to sit down and listen, just like everyone who's been made aware of the situation has shown up to listen. Where is your plan? Show us tangible evidence and documents on how this whole process will work and how the citizen will benefit directly. We have time. Land isn't going anywhere. And if the developers believe in this area that much, they're going to sell our way of life so bad, they aren't going anywhere. So before you annex the land for rooftops that will in no way, and it was proven clearly by the county commissioners earlier this week, adding rooftops will in no way bring revenue to the city. So before granting annexation and adding more burden to every taxpayer, not only in the city, but in the county as well, show us the plans on how to handle the onslaught of eleven hundred or twelve hundred more homes that these developers are sure to murder the small-town feel with, third, on either side of thirty-one. How do these developments help the citizens here? By adding traffic to the diminishing and depleting roadways and diminishing police force enclosing. If the developers truly care about the Westmoreland and the Westmoreland way of life, like they've repeatedly stated, both developers and triple B wouldn't seek to cram as many rooftops per square acre as they can into the city that's already struggling, use their resources to build on the bones of a town that some would say is dying, but isn't dead. They truly value the small-town feel, save it, don't exploit it for every last penny in hope that the city and county can handle it. It's been proven we can't. If this way of life is that valuable, don't choke it out of concrete parking lots for apartments. Be willing to annex.
Time's up, Ms. Litten, thank you.
And help people start farms instead of replacement.
Hey, next one is Brian Spriggs.
I'll keep my comments brief tonight. I'll start off and say that I moved here a little over a year ago because it's a small town. It's why I moved here. I wanted out of the hustle and bustle of the city. If you look at any cost of community service study, it'll show you that building more homes is going to be a financial burden to Westmoreland, not a financial benefit. If you truly want to improve this city, then we have to find creative ways to bring in industrial and more businesses. The third point would be that the council and the mayor need to do a much better job with communication. There's so much confusion in this room because we're not being, not being given clear communication. I have personally phone called and emailed everybody up here, not seeing response. That's a problem, and I hear that from everybody else in the room. And the fourth point, if there's any relationship that anybody up here has that can be considered a conflict of interest, you need to refrain from booking. So that, thank you.
Next up, there's Ricky Klein.
I would ask if y'all guys were willing to suspend the roof of the county. As a county. Okay, you ain't going to respond to that. You ain't going to respond to none of it. But, Mr. Mayor, I want to ask you, this is your statement, not mine. But you told me and Mr. Gary Kirkman, the ex-mayor, that you was a secret partner in your son's business. So that would make you a beneficiary of this project, would it not? And the second question, who's going to pay for this if the county doesn't? Who's going to pay for the infrastructure? Because I don't talk to the county, they're not interested in it. And I've got a meeting with another one this weekend, and they're not interested in anything. Our growth in this town, this, it needs to grow, I'll agree with that, but this is way over the. This is, we're talking about a whole lane road. I was on the council when that was brought up. We're talking about twenty, thirty years down the road. Are we not putting the cart ahead of the horse? We're building houses, you ain't even got the sewer to cover. I know it, you know it too. You ain't got the water, you ain't got the money. And these drains ain't like snapping your fingers. Some of them could take ten, fifteen years. Are you going to have a bunch of houses built out there that have water and sewer to? That's the question. Y'all, y'all got it, everybody always key on what's going on here. Y'all just popped up all of a sudden and said, we're going to build houses. And nobody's had a whole plan. They people have no clue. Did y'all even take, say, one thing like this? Did y'all post three letters at three public places before you voted on that first phase? If you did not post those for fourteen days, you took a little vote. And that's simple. Think I did learn something on the end. Thank y'all. I know you didn't answer.
I will state again to the one speaking, we're not allowed according to rules to respond to comments here. So that's, that's not us being stubborn, that's just the rules that we have to follow. Ms. Linda, you're up next.
Thank you, let me speak to you. They were having a vote. I'm not a speaker, but I'm going to speak from the heart. I'm really concerned for that this many houses coming into our town. I'm more concerned with the truck stop. We have a lot, a lot to think about. I want progress more than anybody in this town. I really, really do. But when you explode it like you want to do it, it's really going to, it's really going to hurt our children. You have children, Adam. You have children, don't you? Oh, you guys have children in this town. We love our children. We want the best for them. We want progress. We want businesses, but we don't want it to explode. We did not want a truck stop. Right now with child trafficking, it is about to surpass drugs. And you put a truck stop out there, you're going to have things going on that we don't want in our town. We do not want it. We don't want our land taken away either. We want our farmers, we want farmland. You put in that many houses, you double, say, two people to a house for eleven hundred, uh, homes. That's like doubling our entire town. How can you do that? And with state, and I don't mean that as a question, but how can you do that and, and, and feel comfortable with it, you know? Because it's like coming from Galilee. It's already a line. And I like to have my husband on a little bit earlier at night, but you know, he's sitting in that line coming from Galilee. So just search your hearts, you know, and, and just do the right thing and listen to the people because, I mean, we really are concerned with everything and we do want progress, but we don't, we don't need a truck stop. We don't need a strip mall. And we don't need that many rooftops, as y'all call it, you know, so that's all I really have to say. But I truly do love my town and I just want you to search your hearts tonight.
All right, Ms. Heather Newman. Thanks, keep you this time.
Thank you. Adjust the mic. Lots, lots of people watching online are saying they can't hear us, so I just would remind everyone to speak into the microphone. First, my name is Heather Newman. My husband and I live on thirty-one E in City Limits. And the, um, bandy rippey land and the proposed subdivision there would be right in our backyard. As well as being on thirty-one E, we're set to be affected from the developments on the front side as well. I wanted to submit to you a petition that we have hundreds of signatures against the annexations in town. Submit that to you, Mr. Mayor, I'm recording. And the signatures continue, so we can present an updated version. I wanted to speak tonight about the water because specifically at the July sixth meeting, Richard, the surveyor for the developers, spoke about adding a second water tower here in Westmoreland on the new land. And I asked, where will the water be coming from to fill this additional water tower? And Mr. Mayor, in that meeting, you said, quote, "Our water situation is not a problem. We've got plenty of water." You also said that we're allowed to sell four hundred thousand gallons a day to Portland. I'd be interested to know, which I know is a rhetorical question tonight, would you still state that Westmoreland has plenty of water? And given our current situation, we're still set to sell four hundred thousand gallons a day to Portland? Or were you banking on a cooperative grant with other municipalities that has not come to fruition? I would be curious to hear you explain to your citizens why you told us one thing publicly, that we have plenty of water, water wasn't an issue here, water pressure, fire hydrants, but yet at the county commission, you pleaded the case for water as if we were in dire straits. If you're going to tell your constituents one thing, you have to know that we're going to follow up and know what you're saying to the county as well. So when you're ready to answer those questions, we all love some answers.
EJ.
My name's EJ Perry. I live on Pleasant Grove Road past thirty-one E. I've lived in Westmoreland my entire life, not only in Westmoreland, but I've lived on Pleasant Grove Road my entire life. After I graduated, I went to college and I got back here as soon as possible. I mean, I consider myself a lifer. I don't, I don't plan on going anywhere. This is exactly where I want to be, where I plan on raising my family for many years. Just like a lot of you guys on council tonight, I grew up with a lot of you and I had you in class and all those things. Um, I was able to purchase a piece of farmland on my, on our old family farm, remodel the house, and that's where we reside. And, uh, also, it's, it's the area that we bought into, like, that's the area of the road on Pleasant Grove right there. It's, it's big tracks, it's big acres, it's, it's, and that's just how it is. Um, and that's the people that also came from out of town and bought in there. They bought into that same way. But people want to be here for the same reasons. They want the way of life, they want the quality of life, they want the small-town feel, and they want the great school systems. People want to keep Westmoreland's way of life. With that being understood, with that being said, I understand completely that we got to have growth. But we've got to be smart about how we grow it, okay? It's coming this direction. As you've heard from hundreds of the citizens, we got to have a smart plan for how we do it. If we do it explosive, I think that's going to have a bad look on our town. And I think we can look at surrounding towns around us, and if we, if we're not careful, we can become some of those towns that I, in my opinion, and I think in all y'all's opinion, are a lot worse off than we are. So I think we have to have a smart plan about how we grow it. Um, I want to speak directly to the annexation proposal of forty-five acres on Pleasant Grove Road right now. And I'm not up here to express to you my feelings because you know, you know how we feel about it. You know how that community feels about that area right now. Um, but I want to, I want to give you hard facts. Residential growth, and it's proven time and time again, doesn't pay for itself. It doesn't support the infrastructure with the money you get. You lose money in tax dollars by simply just putting rooftops. And that's, that's fact. I don't see any reason why that annexation would happen because it's not going to benefit our city monetarily. I, I don't see how that's going to help. It's, it's just, it's not going to help our city. Furthermore, with the annexation possibly on the Chrissy Farms, while I'm not for it, there's industrial possibilities there, there's commercial possibilities there that could, if a lot of things line up and the stars line up, benefit our town. You know, I can, I can make, that makes sense a little bit in my mind. But as far as just adding rooftops and annexing that forty-five acres in on Pleasant Grove Road, it just doesn't make financial sense to our city, and I don't think it's going to help us. Taking all feelings out of it, I'm just trying to present you with facts because obviously nobody in that community wants to see that happen. I think we need to take care of what we got, take care of what we promised because we've already got enough growth going on in that first phase that's already in.
EJ, time to move.
Okay. I mean, that's enough growth for us to see in thirty years.
Uh, thank you, guys. Similar story, um, we live right next to a large acre, acre tracks, um, so we'll rehash all that. Couple of, um, maybe more specific data about the rooftops not bringing in revenue. For every dollar brought in, um, it would cost a dollar, this is speaking on rooftops. So the cost is between a dollar fourteen to a dollar twenty, um, would be what it would cost. So there's fourteen to twenty cents more spending on every dollar that's brought in. Now, on the other end, as he sort of mentioned, commercial, um, is thirty-five cents. So that would obviously be a profit of sixty-five cents. Thus, there's your, you know, there's your sort of profit margin there. So again, just emphasizing that rooftops do not bring in revenue. So how can we remedy that? Raising taxes. The more land that's annexed, the more the city has to be responsible for an upkeep. All infrastructure would be affected by that, water sewer, roads, um, et cetera. I was giving this example yesterday. I thought it made pretty good sense, so I'll, um, re, re give it. Um, let's say there's a large, uh, very nice house, nice property in, in City Limits, and it's a thousand-dollar city tax, which would be way higher than probably top five percent, you know, in city tax and two thousand county tax. So they're paying three grand in taxes. Let's say they have one or two kids, okay? I didn't know this until recently, and I'm an educator of more than fourteen years, that, uh, per kid, per year, it costs nine thousand two hundred and eighty dollars or something like that, per kid every year. So just in education alone, you're losing substantial money. Now, the city, I understand, does not pay, um, for, for education. That's, that's a little bit federal, mostly state, a little bit of county. But county taxes will go up and everybody, and everybody pays county taxes. Third point, since this is a spot zone, um, that's only accessible by county road, so we're jumping right property to, 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 I'm speaking to the bandy rippey annexation. I'm sorry, I didn't look at that. So we're going through on county road to annex a property on the left side of the road is going to be, proposing to be city, right side's county. Who's going to pay for the upkeep of the road? I'm sure county's not going to be very, um, you know, happy to do that. Um, as we discussed at the work study, it's going to be very, uh, the road's dangerous with two ninety-degree turns. Would have to be widened. Who's going to pay for that, um, et cetera? Again, I'm not sure the county's not going to do it. Uh, fourth point, um, it's not consistent with what's right there. My brother just said that. I'll count on that. Uh, but that is a big deal, uh, specifically with regards to the spot zoning I'm referring. Uh, and lastly, you know, the same deal at the federal level, in my opinion, that the governor needs to take care of Americans first. I feel very strongly that, um, that we need to do the same in Westmoreland, to take care of Westmoreland people first.
Brian.
Yes, sir. My name is Brian Newman. I live on thirty-one E as well. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak. Um, actually, since we, since you guys can't answer your questions, I sort of had a question as far as the eleven hundred homes that are proposed, or is that something that the builders came up with or the city council or the planning and development of Westmoreland has come up with? I'm for growth, uh, smart growth, uh, would be, would be the action for me. Like the other guy says, you can't allow just property tax alone because obviously each rooftop would be a burden on the city. And also the, I looked on the Pleasant Grove Community page and each have, there's only four homes, four south homes that are looking to be built over there, and they're all about fifteen hundred square feet. Why are we limiting our demographic to a certain price point? What if we did, what if they built homes that were twice that size? That would still be double the, uh, the amount of property taxes that the smaller homes would have. And also, uh, you know, you want to bring in people with buying power. So if you're, you know, if you got five, six, seven hundred thousand dollar home, those people are going to probably have more potential to, uh, invest money in the city as far as, uh, you know, rehabbing the current locations that are occupied or opening up their businesses. That's all I can say. Appreciate it, yes. Thank you.
Doug Worsham.
My name's Doug Worsham. I live at sixty-seven, eighty-eight, highway thirty-one east. And this is my lot right here, which backs up just below this sunbath. You'll see this little roadway that's proposed to come through, that's where the deer come through every day and walk strolling across by front of you, even go up or down the highway north-south. Sometimes they get through this, you gotta cross it. The main idea out here for though is, I don't like this idea of a person being brought. And I really don't like the other Chrissy's whole place because to me, that's way too much of an impact on this town right now. Later down the road, maybe it'd be fair. And like the lady said before, is I know we, we have to pass through the water sewer, schools or anything that is mentioned so far. And I think we need to concentrate on trying to end some of that debt first and get businesses in there. Now, one other thing, there's that, 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 that you did. I'm also a registered, registered land developer. And I have designed, I don't know, any of this, this small one or the large one, all through middle Tennessee, nation count. I'm asking the people up here in August, if Mr. Brady needs to speak again, please don't jump in too hard because he is just, he's getting paid. I've done it before and I've been in situations like this before. And it gets a little, thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Keen.
Well, I'm not, I'm not a very much figure, but I, I got one. I live awful Pleasant Grove, right? Been here seventeen years. I worked down in Hendersonville, worked at Hendersonville Hospital. I see a lot of traffic coming up and down the road at thirty-one. So what I'm worried in conditions is all my infrastructure are on, on the, school system and what the cost is going to be. I haven't seen anything on the future of that. If we get all these houses and everything coming in. Because whoever thought, I've been, I've lived here, I've been living in Sumter County all my life. I'm sixty-four years old. Who would have thought that cotton town would have a high school and a, and a high school football field and, and basically, uh, elementary school. All of my difficult, wonderful dreams, something like that is because of all the growth of Hendersonville. They went that away. You took from Hendersonville White House and Station Camp for that. And I, I think our children needs more than, you know, what they're, what we're trying to do now. If we're, if we're going to have that much growth, it's going to happen just all of a sudden. We need to look at that. We need to look at that pretty hard on, on what's going on. And, you know, we know the money is not there right now, so I don't know who's going to fund that. So if you want to add property tax to that for the, try to, the. So if you want to add property tax to that for the, try to upgrade the school systems just for all the families, all the families that's coming from other states in here, we need to look at that pretty hard. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Adam Grinder, I live in two thousand and two Pleasant Grove Road. I work in the public safety sector. And since this has come up, a lot of my neighbors, a lot of my friends have stopped and asked me what I think. We've talked about traffic. Traffic's going to be horrible no matter what happens, right? But the traffic I'm here to talk about is what's already started, the construction traffic. We're, we're leaping ahead of what thirty-one E is capable of happening. It's already happened. Got a teenage daughter, she's got a driving permit, we go in the road to pull out. Well, they're working across the road. You got dump trucks, you got more traffic, it's coming. Um, that road's going to be hardly, it's going to be almost impossible to get across if it's all done at once. You know, little things like other red lights coming, or they're going four-lane. One day, thirty-one E will be a four-lane. It's going to be a while. Think about this, um, one-on-nine in Wilson County, they built a lot of homes, they put a lot of people there, and one-on-nine is still a two-lane road. It's four-lane now, it's all great. But in the time, all those people moved in, to the time they got that road four-lane, it's horrible, my mind, sitting twenty minutes trying to cross the road. That's what I'm asking you to think about now, is are we set up to start that fast? It needs to be slow, in my opinion. Thirty-one E, the new road was finished in the late sixties. Hasn't had any major improvements to it since, over fifty years. You know, is it, can we, can we get, not the horse, but the car, but. There needs to be some things done, in my opinion, before all of that comes in. Right, you know, I would ask you to think about that. The traffic's already started. It's not just when those houses were built and the families move in. It's the construction traffic, it's the concrete mixers, it's the dump trucks, it's, it's all of that. So that's what I have, thank you.
Randy.
Randy. Hello, I'm Brandy Lynn, I know most of you guys up here. Thanks for letting us speak tonight. Um, I think we're all here, you can tell that there's a lot of support that's here for our community. Um, we want to ask, um, it's a small town, people know people. I feel like there's probably a couple that have a vested interest in this being pushed forward um, quicker than it should, especially with no one knew what was happening until a sign went up about a month ago. Um, if I would have known about the other one that's on Chrissy Farms, I would have been up here earlier. I didn't know that it was going to be as extravagant as it is until you see bulldozers and track codes and pipelines and all that coming in. And then, in our small town, that kind of is like, whoa! Nobody's not going to know everybody anymore if you pull in a whole lot more people. Um, my other thing is, Brandon, not to throw you under the bus, but this gentleman has been asking for water for months. Um, I know that I've seen him up here a couple of times. He's got a brand new home sitting there, and he can't get water in it. But then we want to annex eleven other homes, eleven hundred other ones, or however many the number is, when we've got a resident that's been here for years, that's bought his land, that's done the right thing, that's bought it, I don't know how long ago it was, but there's probably other people in this town that have bought land that just can't build a house right now. And then you're going to let another development come in where people that do have land here already are not going to be able to get the tap that they need when you're pushing other ones throughout the, you know, through the door. Um, same point as other people have made, as, as far as the traffic goes, um, we've got a lot of small children that are on that road constantly. The trucks that are already coming up and down our road are, there's no room for them as it is, much less if you put in another fifty to a hundred coming in and out every day. My husband mows the, he, weedies the bank at the church, uh, for Lakeside. He does it once a month. In the five-hour timeframe that he's there, weed eating that church bank, there's a thousand trucks that comes through there, going south and northbound. Um, I understand that there would be a, a good idea to have a truck stop, but where'd the last truck stop get us? Um, so I don't think that this will be something that we need to just jump into automatically. There's space out there, commercial space that's already in, uh, next to Haybar. There's a couple more businesses that go in there. Maybe we can start on that side and give the people of Westmoreland opportunity to be able to work here with a good paying job. Um, before you start pulling other people in and not thinking about the people that are in the town of Westmoreland anymore. Thank you for talking, yeah.
Hello, um, my name's Sheila. Um, I was here July sixth for the meeting. And like everybody else that was here that night, I, I listened to the questions that were asking you guys for, I provided a lot of answers. Um, I think that from listening to everybody tonight and everything that I hear and read, I think that the lack of information is what's kind of everybody's so upset. I, I really wish that there was more information available. Um, I'm a little bit naive, and when I was here before and I was listening to the presentation that was made on behalf of the developers, I assumed that, that the information that was provided was documented facts. I, I assumed that they were until some of the things started to sound maybe, um, a little questionable. So myself and a lot of other people who were here, um, did some fact checking. Um, and it's not hard to do. I mean, you can reach your, your county offices, you can reach your state offices, and you can find out, you know, what's in the works, what's not in the works. Um, it sounds like, uh, maybe we were providing some misleading information. I think that you guys have a big decision before you, and I, I respect that. I wouldn't want to be making a lot of the decisions you have to make, but I would think that having good information would be really important. I hope that all of you are, uh, getting the answer, getting the facts that you need to make that decision. I mean, I understand there's not going to be any road work going on anywhere on thirty-one E for, for a long time to come. Uh, and if you'll contact, to y'all, you'll find that out. Um, but there's, there's a lot of questions. And everybody in the community just wants things to be safe for their families, for their children and their grandchildren. And I think you guys all want that too. Um, healthy growth will be good for this town, it will be good for your families, but it needs to be controlled, and I think that you guys would want that too. So I'm praying for you to make the decision, it's a big one.
Thank you. Scotty. Scotty, get, get a word.
Hi, gentlemen. We've, uh, we've heard X amount of people saying the same thing over and over. Uh, nobody's for it, that's what it's about. Um, but I don't want to talk about that. I want to talk about, um, the fact that I moved here from Portland. Because Portland is what you're trying to create Westmoreland to be. And, um, number one, Westmoreland is, uh, not comparable to Portland in size, capacity. Um, they're not comparable in infrastructure capacity. They're not comparable in income capacity. They're not comparable in population capacity. And I drive to Portland every day to my job. And I follow about three hundred cars approximately, probably every day, leaving here, go somewhere else to work. So we don't have any jobs compared to the capacity of Portland. So we have nothing comparable to Portland. Yet, we want to build houses, and we want to do all these things at a rate that is, um, fueled by some kind of fire that is so astronomical that we won't be able to contain once it gets lit. So what I want to talk about for the next minute is the safety of my family. Because I can tell you right now, when my family are four, um, kids that I have, my wife and myself, have approximately five thousand people living across the street from us, I'm not going to feel safe no more. My kids can't run on the farm no more because we're going to have the, the, the people driving up and down the roads so many that it's, it's not going to be, it's not going to be what I come here for. It's not going to be that no more. And I ask that y'all really think about what, um, these people are talking about and, and the concerns that they have. Because it's been said, um, multiple times that we're doing things at a rate that we shouldn't, and so on and so forth, but the, the county, I live in the county. And I'm going to be responsible for things that I'm not going to have a privy to. I'm not going to have city water, I'm not going to have, uh, uh, sewer. I'm not going to have those things. As a matter of fact, my cousin has a house right here on Georgia Aiken Road, twenty-two, twenty-one. Been there since nineteen seventy approximately. Goes this week to go get a sewer tap. Oh, we don't have any sewer taps. But yet, we've already passed two hundred and something houses to be built on a sewer system that, that you said last time I was here, had seventy-seven available. But she can't have one, and she's already been here forever. So who are we, who are we catering to? Who are we, is it the city people of Westmoreland, or is it somebody else? And I'll leave you with this, and I quote, "Mr. David Leith for mayor, as we move forward together, I commit to doing my best to hear the voices of the people of Westmoreland. Let's make Westmoreland a place where all, proud to call home." I would be proud to call it home.
I would like to speak on the zoning ordinance first.
Okay. They've got three minutes here right now.
Okay, I will take three minutes on the zoning ordinance. Uh, I read through this, it's about two hundred and, let me see, two hundred and seven pages. On page forty-three, I noticed the error. Uh, it was the side setbacks in Art One that are thirty feet, and they should be ten, that's what the old book was, and the art the same as it was. And then looking at the flood plain, um, some of the other communities that went to two-foot buffer between the flood zone, uh, the flood elevation and the finished floor. Uh, not, this book has still got one foot in there, and I think it would be prudent for y'all to, to look at maybe doing two-foot. It helps on the insurance. We deal with this with a lot of customers on a semi-regular basis. And they, you know, if, if they're, the higher they are up above the thing, the flood elevation, the better their insurance rates and stuff are. So I'd like for y'all to consider maybe, uh, moving that to, you know, to two-foot. And that's all about the zoning ordinance. I, we had a lengthy meeting the la, during the last public, the public meeting that we had. A lot of information has come to make, I haven't read all of it, but there's a lot of misinformation going around. Uh, the first, the first phase of the Chrissy Farms was started in two thousand and twenty-one, which was, uh, first started with Mr. Kirkland and then did completely different council. And we've been working on this for two years, and we've yet to lay the first foundation. And we had started the roads on the first seventy-two houses, seventy-two lots. This annexation today, that you're talking about tonight, or these annexations today, they are, the commercial and the industrial, especially in the industrial. The fourteen-acre industrial that you're talking about, that y'all, that y'all were bringing on a few, couple years ago, it got, it got helped up in the process. And we had, we had a business that was willing to come there, and we lost that business to Portland because we couldn't get, we couldn't get that through in time. And we've got some companies that would like to come to Westmoreland on the hundred acres and would like to be in that, would like to be here and create some jobs for, for the town. I was born and raised here, I've been, I'm sixty years old next month. And I have surveyed all over this state, all over the state of Kentucky. And I've watched this town deteriorate over the past thirty, forty years, especially the last twenty years, it has went down. You've got to have people.
Bring your times up.
Okay, thank you.
Brandon. I wish you would just straighten them out, let them know what you're asking for, it ain't water.
So I'm actually requesting for, uh, tying and accepting, because I already own previous property. Um, it's been discussed last month and during the work study, it's actually the first time you've had. I've already got the water tap installed and ready.
That's all I need, thank you. And David. Okay, that's all that's signed up, signed up to speak, so the public comments of this meeting is over.
Can we, can we speak if we're late in here?
Uh. You heard him, right? Yeah, we'll let one more go, three minutes.
I'm so glad I was late, I had to work.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Mary Janug, and I am a resident of Sumner County. I live in Gallatin. Um, I represent District Nine as a county commissioner. Um, I'm here to talk to you about the vote we had on, on Monday night about the water and what previously led up to that. Um, I come to Westmoreland every week. I, my husband has family up here.
May I interrupt you? We're not talking about the water tonight, we're talking.
Well, I don't want to get to the annexation. So I, um, came up last week on Wednesday, and I took a trip up Pleasantview Road and went all the way to the end, and I was extremely surprised to see the excavation of the land there and knowing that there was a water issue. I was very perplexed in thinking, why would you do that if you don't have enough water? Um, I talked to some of the citizens here. One girl told me she paid a hundred dollars a month in water because she had a, uh, two thousand gallon limit or something like that. And then down the road, somebody paid sixty dollars, and then the other side, that they paid sixty dollars. So I thought, why would you want to build more housing when you don't have the infrastructure, number one? Because I live in Gallatin, and I've lived in a nightmare of annexations after annexations after annexations in Gallatin. I personally live across from a large farm that they're looking at annexing. We, we are, your, my question too is that do you have the services that you can provide for your citizens if you do all this? That requires fire, police, um, well, EMS, county provides that. But you also have to understand that the, you will add more need for school, and that causes, um, the county will have to buy, build more schools, and that will raise the taxes for the folks in Westmoreland. Now, I've been coming up here for years, and I think that the folks up here are not millionaires, by no means, and I'm not either. And I find it hard to even pay my own taxes. So I kind of am very confused about why you would even think about annexing properties when you have all these issues. And the folks here are telling you, no, we don't want this. And I understand you need industrial or you want to, you're tired of eating at, uh, Mexican restaurants, was the comment at the legislative committee. But I can tell you that you have a beautiful community here. You have beautiful people that live here. The farms, the, the folks that just are so hospitable. I don't, I, I hope that you will really think clearly and be a little bit more frugal about your thoughts of development. Because I can tell you, from living in Gallatin and going through all the annexations that we've dealt with and the problems in Gallatin, you don't want it. You don't want all this because it's going to cause a lot of problems. But I'm here to thank you for allowing myself, number one, to speak. But I'm here to thank you for allowing myself, number one, to speak, but I also want to let you know that I'm a county commissioner and I support you guys, I support everybody here. Just because I'm in a different district doesn't mean I don't care. So I wanted to be here tonight to tell you that I was confused, and when we went to vote, I couldn't think what I saw that day, and I thought, wow, that's a little wild. So I think the moratorium part of this is probably a good idea, but again, you're the, the ones that voted for it, but I just kinda wanna heed warning because this can be a nightmare for you, and I appreciate you letting me speak, thank you. I know.
Okay, that does conclude the public comments. Uh, for, as we get into our business, from this, from this floor forward, there's no input from the audience, unfortunately, that's the rules. And, uh, the council members can't even speak until the motion and the second we make, work for the discussion, so bear with us while we go through this, um, and please try and refrain from saying anything, because I will, I will enforce that. All right, unfinished business, I'm gonna open up the floor for a public hearing on the ordinance zero six two zero two three dash two, zoning ordinance update, this is a public hearing for a second reading on this ordinance, so it is six fifty-one, Ms. Kelly, put that down, the public, public hearing is started. I'll leave that open just for a few minutes, we'll sound here.
I would like to know if you need to open the cap to speak, but it's a public hearing.
That's, yeah, if you hear to speak on this public hearing, you can.
Sorry.
We, we, this is public, this is a public hearing on this ordinance only. Sorry about that.
Sorry.
Okay. I don't think it's anybody here that's wanting to speak on public hearing on this ordinance, so we'll close it at six fifty-two. That's just a process we have to go through. Uh, other unfinished business, ordinance, uh, zero six two zero two three dash two, zoning ordinance update, second reading.
Make a motion to approve ordinance zero six two zero two three dash two, update zoning ordinance, second reading.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Jones and second by Vice Mayor Brown. Uh, it is in the discussion. I would like to say that we added some language to this since the first reading. Uh, we added that any new annexation property coming into the city, that it comes in as zoning agriculture, and then when, if, if they do develop that land, that developer has to come forward, plan it as zoning, and present what either we do. So if it comes in, it comes in as agriculture.
And there'll, there'll also be, they'll have to go through two readings before this body, after it goes to the planning and zoning, before it can be rezoned fully to whatever intended use they choose, so choose. Um, also, I would like to know, Richard, you, you had made a comment about, um, the set, uh, pair with the setbacks in R1. Uh, I called, uh, with, spoke with Kevin Chesney this, uh, this afternoon, he confirmed that that was a, a mistake on his part. He, uh, when we added the agricultural zoning, he had worked on that first, and then he had pulled, started pulling for R1 in order to build the requirements for our, uh, he had pulled from agricultural to build the requirements for R1, and he missed that, was going through yet to get it, uh, so that correction won't be made.
Motion to end. You make an motion to end, include the change. Has it already been made? No, he's just gonna add it to it. Okay. He's just gonna add it to it, we're, we're on the second reading right now. Any more discussion? Ms. Kelly, call the room, please.
Calvert?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Yes.
That's record, record reflect, ask unanimously. Next unfinished business is the ordinance zero six two zero two three dash one, reconnection fee increase, this is the second reading on that.
Make a motion to approve ordinance zero six two zero two three dash one, increase the reconnection fee.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Jones, second by Councilman Borders to, on reconnection fee, any discussion?
This just levelizes the, the new rate, it's, uh, both for the inside and outside city limits, it's fifty-five dollars.
Yes, it's making a great thing on my side, it's a lot better, easier to keep up with. Any more discussion? Ms. Kelly, call the room, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is, uh, Brandon Gross's request for sewer connection, this is the whole business. Brandon lives outside of city limits and is asking to tap onto city sewer.
Make that motion, then we allow Brandon Gross to tap into the sewer connection.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Brown, second by Councilman Jones, any discussion on this matter?
Yeah, I think we need to rehash that maybe in, in a shorthand way, that essentially, uh, it's my understanding, Brandon went to, uh, he actually tried to get his land to perk, did not perk, uh, he has already requested sewer connection, and, uh, we asked him to try to get a, uh, his land to perk and to do a septic system, and did not perk, and since he has already requested a sewer connection, uh, we're essentially voting right now, we're going to actually allow that now that we know that he cannot, uh, he doesn't have it on.
And, and this is because there's already a pit adjacent to his property, which he already owns.
It's not in the city.
In the city.
In the city.
Yes.
And I believe that he's already purchased that sewer.
He has.
Yes.
Okay. Everybody good? Call the room, please.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now some of the new business, um, first item is the, uh, Mr. Patel requesting that we change our liquor ordinance from three liquor stores to four. I entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, that we, uh, look to look at the liquor ordinance update, ordinance zero seven two zero two three dash one.
No, that's not to ordinance, that's, this, this is not to liquor ordinance.
No, that's, okay, we're just doing the.
We're just doing the request of, that Mr. Patel is asking us for.
It's a type of, okay, excuse me, man, but I'll make the motion that we, uh, increase to four retail licenses instead of three.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, so we can discuss.
Motion been made by Vice Mayor Brown and second by, uh, Councilman Calvert, uh, to allow a fourth liquor license. Uh, I have a need to discuss, full, full discussion.
I just wanna say that, uh, Mr. Patel did ask if he needed to be here tonight, um, he said he is still interested, but he had some things that he has to do, so that's why he's here.
I personally don't think we need a fourth liquor store, but that's totally God's decision.
I don't know that we can support four liquor stores. That's my opinion.
Well, we, you know, we, we've talked a lot about retail growth and, uh, growth of, of things that, uh, that's not, uh, retail, or, excuse me, that's not rooftop revenue, so, uh, for me, I, I would like to see retail increase in sales, uh, if it's, if it's something that we can possibly do.
Okay. Any more discussion on this matter? Ms. Kelly, call the room, please.
Borders?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Staples?
No.
That record showed that the vote was three to two, not in favor of this motion, motion favor, this favors. Next, next item of business is the, uh, Holman Annexation Resolution, R zero two, R zero eight two zero two three dash one, I entertain a motion for the first reading on this.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of annexation, uh, resolution R zero eight two zero two three, that's one, uh, annexation of the Holman property.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Jones, second by Councilman Borders, any discussion on this matter?
I wanna make a, make a point, uh, heard what the public has said about the number of rooftops, and I also heard what the public has said about slow sustainable growth, slow smart growth, controlled growth, and, um, I've also been here long enough to remember what happened to this community when Fleetwood closed up shop, largest Fleetwood manufacturing facility in the, in the nation, and, uh, as a result of that, our economy was not diverse at all, our economy was solely reliant on Fleetwood and their success. And when they decided to close up shop, you started to see businesses close downtown, you started to see businesses close elsewhere in town, you started to see businesses pop up and fail. And Mike's grocery store even moved to a higher traffic location to improve his business. I'm in favor of this property and annex, annexing this property because of the industrial opportunities and the commercial opportunities, the, the jobs that can come along with this to promote incomes in our community that allow people to have a living wage, not a minimum wage, not, I mean, you can say that, you know, people are making fourteen dollars an hour, now that's more than minimum wage, that's, if you wanna look at it, minimum wage is fourteen dollars an hour right now with the way that inflation has gone, the way things have changed in this country since COVID. These opportunities, job opportunities that would come along with this, allow people to have a living wage, a true living wage, to be able to go and have expendable income to go spend money in our community and go spend money to local businesses and drive local business to help see them thrive and grow and be able to have success. It kills me every time we have a business open up and within a year, two years, fall apart. And, uh, I'm a local business owner, I own a door business. I have to go elsewhere most of the time to drum up business because, and the cost of windows hasn't gone down, it's only gone up, just like everything else. And unfortunately, we don't have the jobs here to drive the incomes for people even to make improvements to their homes. You know, we, we as a council, hear people in the community all the time talk about how there's a dilapidated property here, there's a dilapidated property there, some of which, some of the property owners should be able to take care of that property better, others struggle just to make it day to day, struggle to make the minimum water bill payment, struggle to make property tax payments, people have noted today. But this opportunity gives them maybe a, a, a new rebirth on what their future could look like. Not to mention be able to work at home, closer to home, and not have to drive thirty minutes to an hour just to go have someplace to work, because that's, I mean, I would love to work a lot closer to home than an hour away, hour and a half away some days, because that's time away from my family, and I know other people feel the same way, people in our community feel the same way. So I, 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 uh, made the motion to approve this for that purpose, and that purpose, the majority alone, uh, is for the jobs that are bringing our community. Just.
I will make the statement too that this is not gonna happen overnight, this, this plan out there is a fifteen, twenty-year plan on Buildout, and, uh, this, it's not gonna happen overnight, I mean, we've got to, uh, we'll, our engineer says that, uh, our sewer system will, will be able to double its capacity in five, six years. So the growth is, the growth has gotta wait on us to get our sewer system up and running, and just to clear y'all's mind, Westmoreland has plenty ample water to feed this project, we're not hurting for water, we've got some lines that are gonna have to be repaired, we're not hurting for water. Gallatin, Gallatin has a, um, thirty-two million dollar, a thirty-two million gallon per unit a day from the core engineers that they pull from Compton River, and we're hooked directly to Gallatin, that's where we get our water, so water is no problem.
Um, I, I do have some questions. Um, if we annex this property, do they fall under the existing rules, or if we change some of our ordinances, some of our specifications for the things when they're built, will they fall under those new specifications?
Well, we just, uh, just passed, passed on the second reading on the new, new regulations, so they will fall under the new regulations.
Do those new regulations have enough information and, and specifications on storm drain systems, on water distribution systems, on sewer collection systems, are we gonna continue to tap into a dilapidated vacuum system, or are we gonna require a different type of system be installed, and do we have proper specifications in line for that so that we don't let them adopt what we already have, but we have to have new specifications that state specifically what we want, even up to brand names of, of pumps and pits?
Yeah, I think you do, don't worry, Richard, you've looked it over, how did you?
Aaron's still here?
Aaron?
Aaron, when, uh, do, do we have something like that in place?
Yes, I had just been working on that the past two years, and I just finalized it a month ago, so our standard sewer specs and standard water specs are up to date, uh, with what we are looking for in the future, and it does not allow vacuum system.
So everything new that would come in has to be on, on, uh, gravity?
Gravity or low pressure?
Or low pressure system. Okay.
Uh, I, I want to depose a different thing that, that I've been thinking about, um, and I, I've tried to picture, uh, what will happen to this property if it is not annexed, and how that, that affects the city or doesn't affect the city. And it's been my understanding that the owner of the land does not have interest in it being maintained as a farm. Their, their interest is to build on the land. And whether they do or whether they don't, whether it remains farmland or somebody builds on it, we are the closest infrastructure to those pieces of land. So whether they build houses or industrial or commercial, the city of Westmoreland will be responsible for responding, for, uh, for fire, for police, and even if, uh, you know, let's say that the jurisdiction is the county for our crime situation, we will be the first ones there, because that's just the reality of, we're less than two miles away, and, um, I spoke with Mark Jenkins on the fire, fire responds up to five miles away. And I know a lot of the concern has been how will this affect the city and what we have, and I, I think that maybe the perspective is that we also have to look at how is it gonna affect us? So if. So if we, so if they build and they're not in the city, because we don't want anybody to get hurt, because we want to provide that service, we will be providing a service that they're not paying for. And I don't mean that in a negative way. It's that, that, that service will not be reimbursed by the population. So we will be overextending ourselves no matter what happens.
I've already been.
Right, and that's what we do now. Now granted, if they choose to build, that's obviously going to change, but we're going to have to do something different regardless. Now, to be fair, well, is the, there is a density difference based on what they proposed. But also, I've had to convince myself too that what we're voting on tonight is just the annexation of the property and not what they're planning to build. I know that they have announced what their intentions are, and they've been clear about what they want to achieve. But they also are governed by our process. And especially since that we've passed these new zoning restrictions, they're going to have to go through a stringent process in order to be able to achieve what they want. And at any step, if we can't provide water, if we can't provide sewer, if our fire department or police department say that we can't provide those services without doing something, then the plan of services is going to fall apart for that development. And they're not going to be allowed to build, and we're not going to be allowed to issue a permit for that. So we have a great responsibility to watch those things whenever those things come through planning. And that is your right to come to as well. Whenever, if and when that happens, you're welcome to come to those meetings just like you are to these. And it's a very similar setup. And you have a voice there just as much as you have at these council meetings.
I would, I would make a note of something else that was said earlier during the public comments portion. I heard several people mention that, that we need to have a plan. Right? Well, I also heard several people mention that there's been a lack of information, a lack of communication. And I'm, I'm big on extreme ownership. I'm big on owning my faults. And I'll, I'll accept responsibility for a portion of that. I'm sure the rest of the council would probably accept a, a piece of ownership for either a lack of communication or, or just simply that we, we don't know the best form of communication that we can use to communicate some of these things. But as far as a plan, this zoning ordinance, we started eight months ago?
Yes.
And we started that because we saw a need when Pleasant Grove Farms was approved. Whenever it was, when it was submitted, when it was annexed, when it was, the first two phases were approved of that development. We saw a need that, look, this zoning ordinance is so old and then added to so many different times. We've got a problem here and we need to fix it before the next developer comes in and tries to do something. Because while this developer has done exceptional with providing above and beyond what our ordinance requires and requests of him, the next one may not be. So we devised a plan to address that. And that's what our, that's what we just passed this evening with the zoning ordinance. In that, part of that plan is we want to be able to establish a little bit of control about what happens in our community. And when we make these, we allow these annexations, we want to have a little bit of say so as to what that owner does with that property. Because that affects you and I and everyone in this room, whether you're in the city limits or not. So I'll, I'll, I'll leave my sta-, I'll end my statement by saying with an annexation, you know the five people here, whether it's the same faces in, you know, a year and a half, or whether it's five completely new ones. You know the people here who are working for you, are working with you and alongside you, listening to you and hearing you out. I've talked with a bunch of you in the room. And if we don't approve an annexation, you're stuck with the county commissioner, who half of them don't have all the information, don't have full information. You heard the county commissioner here tonight not give you correct information. And, and that's because she doesn't know it, and they don't know it. They don't know what's going on up here. I'm just, I'm just saying, they, they don't, they don't know what's going on up here. The majority of them don't. Some of them do. But would you rather have five people who know you, who a lot of you have grown up with you and known you most of your lives? Or would you rather have the body that half of them don't even know Westmoreland exists?
All right, anybody else got anything to say? Else to say like this? Ms. Kelly, call roll please. This is the first reading.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Staples?
No.
Borders?
Yes.
The record reflect four to one. The first reading of the annexation passed. Our next item is the Holman Plan of Service Resolution R zero eight two zero two three dash two. Plan of Service. I entertain a motion on this one.
Make a motion, we received Plan Services Resolution R zero eight two zero two three dash two.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Brown to have a second.
I second.
Seconded by Councilman Calvert. Any discussion on this? So most discussion was already been done, so, but anybody else got anything to say?
I would like to make a statement to that. I did read over the Plan of Services thoroughly. And I, I just wanted to make a point for anyone else who hasn't seen it. The Plan of Services read as the property is, and they do not reflect what the potential plans are for the property. So the property states that they do not require any additional fire, they do not require any additional police, and that they're responsible for any sewer and water and so forth. So I just want everyone to know that they come across the document and they see that, that we are approving or not as the property stands at this moment. It is not, it doesn't have anything to do with any potential plans because at the end of the day, those have not been approved. They have not went through our process. It has to pass planning. If it goes through planning, then it will come to us and we still have to pass it twice. If I was in that group.
That's correct.
So I, I just want everyone to know to make sure that if, if it doesn't come across that we're approving something that seems like it may be false. Because we're, we are approving as is, just like we are, we just approved the annexation of the property as it is. So I just wanted to, to make that clarification because that might not be clear.
I want to thank you for that. Any more discussion? Ms. Kelly, call roll please.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Staples?
No.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
The record, record reflect four to one, motion carries. First reading. Next item on the agenda is the Van De Rippe Annexation Resolution Number R zero eight two zero two three dash three. I'm entertaining for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to defer until the work study.
On first reading?
I'd still like to make a motion to defer because I, I still got questions I'd like to ask and, and more, a lot more discussion to have.
All right, Councilman Jones has made motion to defer. I have a second.
I second.
Councilman Staples has seconded, and there's no, no discussion on it further. So we'll, we'll make the same motion on the Plan of Services also.
I'll make the same motion for the Plan of Services as well.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made on the Plan of Services by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Staples, and there's no discussion on it to go. It's going to be put back to work study. All right, defer, yeah, defer. No, there's no vote on defer. Yes, yeah, it is motion, yes. No, no discussion.
No, right, that's it.
No discussion, call roll here.
This is for the first?
Yes.
Uh, Jones?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
The record show for five zero, Plan of Service, call roll.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
The record reflect five to one, add to that, Mr. Stevens, defer it back to work study. All right, moving on to the part-time planning director for IDP, Chamber of City will partner up third. I entertain a motion on this.
Make a motion to approve part-time planning director for the Chamber of Commerce.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Jones to, and seconded by Councilman Calvert, to partner up with the IDP, Chamber, the City, partner together to hire a part-time director. And they will be overseen by the Chamber of Commerce. Any discussion?
This is a six month?
Six month deal, yeah. Don't know when that six month is going to start because the Chamber don't have the money to put into it right now. So this, this probably put on hold for a little while.
Just making sure the funds are there once, once they're ready to hire a director.
I forget now what.
Six hundred dollars?
Yeah, about six hundred.
For six months?
Yeah. Any more discussion? Call roll, Ms. Kelly.
Borders?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
The record reflect five to one, add to that, Mr. Stevens. Uh, the next one is the wastewater treatment plant change order. We got over this at the, at the work study. Let me try to pull up here. I think this is, uh, I think we've done approve, we've done approve the change orders for the paving and all that.
Yes.
So this is, that was already done.
This is for the inspector for the extended period of time of construction?
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could, the only thing included in the change order three that has, has not been approved by the council already, so paving has been approved. The informed force man has been approved. The deduct of some stormwater drainage structures have been approved. The air piping reconfiguration, that's just, that's just. Is the only thing that's not been approved by previously. This change order three, wrapping all of this together, simple to follow. And then a separate piece with engineering contract inspection out to September. We discussed it at work study.
So the amount of money is, is what of this? A little bit confused on this here.
So the total change order four, three is three hundred sixty-five thousand, which is the summary of those four. Just detail. And then the engineering contract amendment is just over getting, we want to get exact contract, but the, the engineering contract amendment two is sixty-six thousand five hundred for inspection services.
We have seen it cleared, Roger.
Do you want to break out that three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, please?
I'll take it slowly, so you're doing so. And I'll just give exact, just, just to, so change order three, project change order three, the total is three hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred forty dollars. Three hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred forty. And that includes, actually don't have these exact prior, so these will be, if you have these four out, they may have these two, what the owner is giving. But for paving, as been proved, is two hundred thirty-seven thousand. Paving is two hundred thirty-seven thousand. And informed force man, tie, is one hundred fifteen thousand. That's approximately. The change for the air piping reconfiguration is twenty-one thousand, approximately. And then there's a deduct of seven thousand for stormwater drainage structures. If you want, also write out the engineering contract amendment two is sixty-six thousand five hundred sixty dollars. That's hourly, so you're not to see. It's an hourly fee, eighty dollars an hour, up to sixty-six thousand.
But it could not, it could be less than that, chance of it being less than that.
That gets, that's estimated construction out to September twenty-second, which is what the contract is currently estimated.
Where it's all at? Completion in September?
That's old plant torn down, new plant completed, full. It should have an attachment, like if provided, if it's not attached already, but some understand, maybe our company, we have, have a schedule in it, but I should be able to see how quickly.
All right. I get, I entertain a motion on approval of this change order.
Make a motion that we approve the change order for the wastewater treatment plant?
I'll second.
Our motion's been made by Mr. Staples, seconded by Councilman, Councilman Staples and Councilman Jones to approve the change order for wastewater treatment plant. Uh, any discussion? Any more discussion, yes?
Is there any more change orders?
No.
Just so I can prepare myself.
I don't, I don't want to seem too optimistic over here, make a headway.
All right, Ms. Kelly, call roll please.
Brown?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
The record reflect five to one passed unanimously. And last item on the agenda, we didn't talk about this at work study, but I did add it to the agenda, is the Hazard Mitigation Resolution. We were getting this fame of money for, for the windstorms back earlier in the year. We're about to pass a resolution for them to distribute those funds.
Make a motion to approve Resolution R zero seven two zero two three dash one.
Second, have a motion.
Motion's been made by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Staples. Any discussion on this? Aaron, you remember what you turned in to them?
I did not, not off my, not off my.
It's not bad, it's not going to be up to that.
No.
Just mitigation.
It's just, it's fame of money that, that the president declared, so the county is disaster areas, so whatever we get, that's what we get. All right, any more discussion? Call roll please.
Calvert?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Staples?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
The record flows, reflected in five to zero unanimously. And the very last item on the.
Mr. Mayor, before, you may be about to say that, but can you explain how the next meeting is going to?
Yes, yes. I'm trying to work it out where, where our next meeting will be at a different location, where we'll have more seating. I got some fine details to work out with the rain center over here, that they hold, hold on after school. And that'll give more seating. And that'll give more seating over there. So I'm working on that. Get that done so we don't have people standing outside. And that is it.
So move.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, and that's not debatable. Thank you all for coming out and thank you for understanding our rules. Very thank you.